Welcome, everyone. This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Garrity.
Here.
Councilmember Habercorn.
Present.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Councilmember DePantholous.
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan.
Here.
Councilmember Dill.
Here.
Council President Johnston.
Here. Also present is Mayor Tapp, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Heath, City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Okay, I'm just going to move a couple of things around on the agenda. First of all, Resolution Number 254, we're going to pull that from tonight's agenda. And Resolution Number 52, we're going to move to the front of the agenda in the interest of everyone's time. Could I have a motion to open for public comment on Resolution Number 252 only, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution Number 252?
Resolution Number 252.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment on Resolution Number 252.
Now, Resolution 252. Resolution Number 252 of 2024, saluting Edward Butch McGrath. Whereas Edward Butch McGrath is a longtime resident of the city of Summers Point, and whereas Butch began his career as the Summers Point Fire Subcode Official on September 9th of 1993, and whereas Butch brought an unparalleled passion for his work to the job and was a real asset to the city, bringing happiness to all around him with his constant smile and witticisms. Whereas Butch has been very involved with the community, including his commitment to the Summers Point Historical Society, the Good Old Days Festival, and the Horsepower by the Bay Car and Boat Show. Whereas, in addition to his dedication to his profession and community, Butch also served as a professional firefighter in the city of Margate for many years. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the mayor and city council recognize and thank Edward Butch McGrath for his dedication and service to the city of Summers Point, and it is further resolved that the mayor and the city council, on behalf of the citizens of Summers Point, convey their gratitude and best wishes to Butch in his retirement.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr.?
I just wish to, want to wish you well, and obviously you've been a wonderful asset to the community and to the city, rather, and obviously you're well-liked, as we can see the entire staff is here. So, congratulations. Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Butch, going into the construction office. I'm definitely going to miss that monotone voice of yours. Aye, how you doing? And listen, not for nothing, at 83, are you sure you're not rushing into this retirement thing at all? I wish you the best of luck, Butch. Thank you.
Butch, I got to tell you, we've known each other probably 40 years, and I started out knowing you as the person that tried to keep my brother out of trouble at the Margate Fire Department, and all the crazy stuff we did hanging out together and being involved in the historical society, and you working on everything that we did. It took me about 20 years before I actually realized your first name was Edward. You know, so, but I appreciate everything that you did for us. I know I'm going to see you just as much. So, and I wish you well in retirement, but we're going to keep you busy. So, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolutions down there? Yeah, sure.
Butch, you want to come forward?
Butch, come on.
The microphone's here.
Give us a chance to clap for him.
There's a photographer over there, Mr. Mayor. Right there.
Chuck Westcott, the Chair of our Economic Development. He's going to give us his quarterly report on the great work they're doing.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administration, I'm very happy to be here tonight. I wanted to give you a quick update on what EDAC's working on currently, what we've been doing, what we're planning on doing. Our focus this year has been primarily on two things: marketing and our participation in the master plan reexamination. As far as the marketing goes, I think everybody's pretty much familiar with the Do You Love Summers Point campaign. If you haven't seen us, there's a QR code. It takes you to the city's website. You sign up. You get eight emails a year. It's not sales marketing. It's strictly about the activities going on within the city. As of September, we had collected approximately 2,000 emails, but after some auditing and purging, it's under 1,000. Unfortunately, those open emails catch a lot of bots. There's typographical errors. People don't do it right. But we're getting consistent lists of 700 to 800 that are going out on a monthly basis. Our open rate, which is important, is two and a half times the industry average. That means people are opening it to see what's in it. They're not just deleting it. The click rate, which means they're actually interacting with it, the click rate is more than six times the industry average. That means not only do they want to see what's going on, but they have questions. They want to know more information. So, they're clicking through, and then that brings them to the city website. Facebook is doing very well as well. We've had increases in both followers as well as reach. The gold standard with Facebook is views of the page. That would be the bronze. The silver would be an interaction with the page. That's a like. It's a comment. It's a whatever. The gold standard is shares. So, our push is to share. I would encourage all of you, as well as all of you present, if you're not visiting the Facebook page, please do it. But do more than just look at it. Interact with it. Like it. And if you really see something that's interesting, share it. The whole idea is to get the word out there. And the more we increase the reach, the more effective it becomes. New followers, our high month was this past April. We added 279 followers that month, which is really good. Our peak reach was April, which was over 61,000 people. So, that meant 61,000 unique eyes looked at that webpage. That's significant. That's really good. Obviously, our activity varies with the season, higher in the spring, summer, a little bit lower in the shoulder season and the off-season. But we're seeing, continuing to see numbers that support the expectations based on peak season, trough season. And our boosting plan, which is limited to $150 a month, that's for Facebook, that has continued to be very effective, and it produces pretty much what we expected it should. It's getting beyond just the native followers. It's pushing to like everyone within Summers Point. Or if we boost beyond Summers Point, we're getting a whole lot more eyes on it. So, we're looking at that, and hopefully we'll be able to expand that. We also met with Performance Marketing last week, Janice and the other member of the Subcommittee from EDAC, and we began talking about, well, we reviewed our successes from '24, which I just shared with you, and we began planning for '25. What we'd like to do is to see if we can come up with some more funding so that we can boost more posts, maybe take it to the next level. We're fine if we continue where we are, but we're going to see things level off, and the goal is not to level off. The goal is to continue, to continue the momentum. So, but we're working on a couple of plans with that. As for the master plan reexamination, we've been working with Triad and Associates to identify some potential items for inclusion into the master plan reexamination. So, on August 26, we hosted members of Triad. Carolyn Zampano, who is the President, as well as two of her senior associates, joined us in our meeting. We had great discussions, a lot of talk, a lot of talk, a lot of sharing. I think they were a bit overwhelmed when they left, but I think they got a pretty good sense of what our intent was as far as using their services. They're a nationally-known firm, so they come well-equipped to be able to handle our needs. We discussed some timelines. We also discussed a potential deliverable, because that's honestly what we're looking for. We're looking for something that we can include in the master plan reexamination, and if it isn't appropriate to include it, we want it to be there as a reference document to go along with the master plan. And then on Friday, October 24, we had a follow-up visit with Mike Epifanio, who had joined us at the meeting, and we did a little ride around town. Janice and Adam Merrill and I and Mike hit all four corners of Summers Point. We were in places that most people never go, back to Fayo Lane. We were all the way down to Drag Island. You know, we looked and poked and prodded and showed him all the issues that we would love to be able to address, and we realized we're not going to be able to hit all of it, but we're showing him the whole thing in the hopes that they can come up with a plan that will provide us with some legitimate economic development. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Chuck. I just want to thank you for all the effort and work that you put into this, as well as the rest of the members of the Economic Development. For years when I was on council, I used to think, what do they really do? There's no question now what you people are doing and what you're achieving, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and the Economic Development team for your efforts.
I appreciate that. We do have a really good committee. People are really seriously interested in what's happening. It's not that they say it's my way or their way. They're there for the right reasons, and they really do want to see good things happening. And I did provide a brief of the client update for you.
Thank you. Anyone have any communications to offer? Hearing nine, Mr. Mayor?
I just have a couple of things. This Saturday, as probably everyone here knows, we got trunk or treat. This is put on by our Summers Point Police Department. It's from 4:30 to 6:30 on the corner of Bay and Harbor Lane. That's there. So, I believe everyone who's going to take part has already registered, but if you've got kids, grandkids, bring them by. It's a great event. Once again, another reminder, our Christmas parade is December 7. It's not the 6, like it's been mailed out to everyone. It's December 7. It's Saturday, and it starts at 6 o'clock. Goes down Shore Road, starts at Dolls Avenue, ends up at City Hall. Something else coming up, on November 2, Saturday, is the Trail of Two Cities. It's the 5K run. We do this every year, so if you want to, you probably go on a website to register. It starts in Ocean City. The buses leave Summers Point, Kennedy Park, at 7:30. 8 o'clock start, and there'll be buses going actually in both directions to either bring Summers Point to Ocean City, they run back, or to bring the Ocean City ones that run, and then we bring them back. And then Veterans Day, of course, is 11:11. Our ceremony will be at 11 o'clock at Patriots Park. Hopefully, everybody can show up. And I say the best for last. All right, so if anyone's been at ShopRite lately and looked at the shopping carts, you know, and there's a little sign on there that says, "Shopping carts may stop unexpectedly at the exit doors, and the carts will stop if taken beyond the perimeter of the parking lot." So, that is a big step, and I encourage, I think we take a look at that, we see how well that works out, and then I'm going to encourage council to, and Tom Smith, to put an ordinance together and make that somehow mandatory for different shopping areas here in town. You know, we have the new Aldi's coming in. It would be an excellent place to have that start also, because those shopping carts are just all over the place. And I want to thank ShopRite for taking this big step. I want to thank Don Dunleavy for putting enough pressure on ShopRite for the constant calling of get your shopping carts off our street, and I do appreciate that. Thanks, Don. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Frost?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Just one item. Originally, we were going to receive bids for Ocean Avenue Phase 2 today, but there was a slight delay because of the DOT approving, doing the final sign-off. So, bids will be received next Friday instead, and it should be ordered next Tuesday.
Thank you. Anyone have any committee reports?
Madam President, may I bring up some health and wellness stuff?
Yes, please.
Relax Gentle Flow Yoga. It's on Tuesday and Thursday at the Senior Center. Thank Maureen for leading that group. If you want to join it, 9:45 is the arrival time. It starts promptly at 10 o'clock. We also have, continue our We Walk Summers Point, meeting on Mondays and Wednesdays. Monday behind City Hall, Wednesday is at Kern Field. The group is looking at possibly adding Fridays, because they want to get another day in during the week. On Monday that just passed, we actually had a gentleman, my name is Scott Warren, from Shore Physicians Group. He was here, and he presented on vaccines and flu shots. It was a very interactive presentation. It was 15 people here, so we're going to look at, with working with Shore Medical, starting in January, to see if we can get some other topics to be presented here for our residents. We do have an upcoming class, which starts on the 11th of November. It's going to be at 9:30 here in City Hall. It's called WISE. It's a wellness initiative for senior education. If anybody would like to sign up for that, please let me know. We do have 15 people already signed up for it, which is what they look for, so we can squeeze a few more in if we need to. And that's it. I just wanted to post everybody on the opportunities here in town that we're trying to build for health and wellness, so thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick note from the Steering Committee. We're, you know, we've been working on the master plan reexamination. As a part of that, we will be meeting with the Summers Point Business Association on November 7 to meet with our business owners in the, in town and get their input, and explain to them what the process is, and we'll just keep getting, getting more input from them, so, from the business community.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Owen?
The Summers Point Arts Commission, the talent showcase that they normally have every year down at the theater is being moved to January 12. And also, this coming month, Summers Point Arts Commission, Dan Myers is going to have a three-day photography session. It's going to be $30 per person if they want to sign up, learn how to, you know, take better pictures and whatnot. They're with the senior building, starting on Saturday, November 9, then the 16th, and they'll wrap up on the 30th. So, it's basically $10 per class from 10 to 12. So, looking forward to it.
Got lots of things to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Could I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 10, and executive session meetings, also October 10, as in content only?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only. Anyone wishing to speak, please sub up to the microphone and state your name.
Well, good evening, council members. I am Levi Fox, and I live at 90 Broadway, and sorry to have to be back here again. I am here tonight representing the High Bank Tenant Association, really happy to see so many of my neighbors here, and the Summers Point Renters' Rights Movement, still seeking answers to some of the same questions that we posed at the meeting two weeks ago to the city council president. And while the complete silence that I received in response to my question, as well as the fact that we are back here again for what looks like the very same resolution, is evidence of the council president's answer. But I will give you another chance, Madam Council President, if you want to respond to the question, which I'll remind you of, whether you endorse the illegal eviction of 17 families over the holidays so that you can use a shady redevelopment process in order to give tax breaks to multimillionaires. Do you work for the voters of Summers Point, we're two weeks out from Election Day, or do you work for developers? And I'll add a couple more. Can you promise the people of Summers Point that as part of this shady redevelopment deal, you won't be giving up any public land in addition to tax breaks? And could we get you to stop wasting the people's tax money on redevelopment lawyers? Would you like to answer any of those?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, I'm not permitted to answer.
I don't think you're not permitted. I think you're choosing not to, but I appreciate you having the opportunity. I'll direct it away from you now. I'm not talking to you anymore, Madam Council President.
You asked me to answer. I'm trying to answer.
Okay. I thought your non-answer was your answer. Go ahead.
That is my answer, but I want to tell you why, because you have mentioned litigation and attorneys, and therefore I'm not permitted to answer, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, my mention of, I don't know where I came up with litigation or attorneys anywhere in there, but it's the same fever dream that's bringing us back here over and over again. All right, so I'll appeal to council. Councilman Garrity, I got to tell you how happy many of us longtime locals were to see that you consented one more time to serve on council. And I just hope that, you know, I feel like I don't really need to ask this. I know the answer, but I have to ask, how would you respond to that, that question about this particular redevelopment deal?
I would just say, that was about five questions.
It was. It was a prompt. I'm an educator. I do that.
All right. You want me to break it down, I think, from what the, if I missed one of the five? Number one is, I think Summers Point's the hottest real estate market in New Jersey, if not the East Coast. I wouldn't be in favor of any tax deals or pilot programs or anything like that.
I appreciate that very much.
All right. The other, I'm thinking of two. You got to stay with me here, because I got a good memory. It's just short.
Are we, are we, excuse me, just a minute. Are we okay with discussing this even though it's an executive session resolution?
Well, I mean, why is it behind closed doors? That's the question.
Three minutes are up.
It's an executive session because of the potential contractual relationship with the prospective purchaser. So, yes, that's your answer.
Okay.
If he's just answering some broad questions, he can answer.
Yeah, I'm just.
I thought I'd not get into specifics about what was proposed.
I will try to ask general redevelopment-related questions. Thank you for that.
Okay. Now, you got me totally confused. What were the other four?
I think, I think I've got the answer we were all looking for.
Okay. That works for me.
Cool. Councilman Dill?
Yes.
I was very pleased recently to receive your mailer highlighting the importance of tenant protections and reasonable rent stabilization, which, don't you love that term, rent stabilization? Isn't that a good term?
I absolutely do, but that's beside the point.
And so, can I?
That's a personal opinion.
Can I assume that you're not in favor of these kinds of redevelopment schemes?
I'm in favor of redevelopment if it's done in the proper way, and it protects the citizens of the community that are affected.
Thank you. Councilman McGuigan?
Yes, sir.
It was really good to see you at the car show.
Always a pleasure to see you. There it is.
And one thing I like about that is it's an event that brings together, you know, really highlights the wide range of people who call Summers Point home.
Very true.
And so, I would assume, I would like to, and you know, I would like to know once again that you support the local residents as you have so often previously.
That has not changed in the 16-plus years I've been here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Habercorn?
Yes, sir.
I was going to tell you that I thought you would, you deserved to be Rookie of the Year on council this year, but I also want to add best rest.
Say that again? I missed that.
Oh, I said, I also want to add best rest to that. So, two awards. And I know a lot more is expected. We expect big things in here, too, and I'd like to start by hoping that you can publicly come out against these kinds of redevelopment plans that seemingly are not good for the community, especially the residents of Ward 2.
I would echo down there what Kirk was saying. This is a hot market here. It's not the market it was 10 years ago when I moved into town. You served on EDAC with me. You know I'm for growth in the town, but it's got to be smart, and it's got to be done right.
I love that idea of smart growth. Thank you, sir. Councilman Owen, I know that many people appreciated your offer to be on that committee exploring rent stabilization, especially ahead of your potential Ward 2 reelection run next year.
Absolutely, Levi. Appreciate you coming forward tonight.
And I hope that you might be the fifth member of council to give us a supermajority against this kind of redevelopment scheme that seems to be affecting the town as a whole.
I don't see it being as a scheme as a whole, Mr. Fox.
So, are you coming out on the side of landmarks?
We're here to represent the city.
The people of the city.
The people of the city.
That's what I hope to hear.
I really appreciate you coming forward tonight.
Thank you.
And maybe possibly somewhere down the road, you might be more of interest, you know, sitting up here with us.
Oh, you know, 50 votes away, I'd be sitting in Councilman Garrity's seat right now still.
Right. Okay.
If you all recall.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait, clarify that. We didn't run against each other.
Oh, and nor would we ever. Yeah.
In the interest of anyone.
Last one. Councilman DePantholous, how are you tonight? Can you confirm that we have not spoken about this issue previously, and I literally have no idea what you might say?
Well, I am pro redevelopment, and.
Even though it is the constituents of Ward 1 that are affected?
I'm not going to be interrogated by you.
I apologize for you feeling like you were interrogated by being asked a single question.
I answered.
A handful of related questions.
Excuse me, but you're way over your three minutes, so can.
Well, I appreciate the council's being so, so patient. You have the patience of saints, and I thank you all in the audience for your patience. I do love Summers Point, and I hope you all love it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
He's trying to move.
Who?
Pat.
Pat, are you coming up, Pat?
I was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too.
Tough act to follow.
That was the idea. Number two forty-seven, what is she being hired for?
She's being a confidential assistant in the clerk's office.
An assistant in the clerk's office? She's a replacement.
Yeah, we had four people in the clerk's office, one of whom retired, one of whom resigned, and now we have two, so we need to hire two more.
Okay, so she's needed them, right?
Right.
And, two fifty-one, what's he being hired for?
She is a secretary of the clerk's office.
So two, these both are going to the clerk's office?
Correct.
And two have left, and two are being replaced?
Correct.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. And the other one is, two forty-six. What's that about? Just give me an overview. Mr. Smith, you want to?
Executive session to discuss obligations and operational issues with each of us.
So, what's to, what's there to discuss?
I really can't disclose that at this point because it's going to go into executive session relative to personnel and contractual relations that the city has with vendors.
Okay, so when are we going to hear the result?
It may never be a result, it may be just a discussion.
Oh, okay. All right, I'd like to go on record as saying, you know, for thirty years, the Beach Concert, look what it went to, number one in the country, in the country, okay? You tried doing something to be in number one in the country, or me, or anybody else in this place. That Beach Concert is just a jewel for this town, and I don't want you messing around with it, so, I mean it, so, that's what I have to say. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number two forty, please.
Resolution number two forty of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client communication regarding the status of litigation involving the city and its zoning board entitled Garden State Outdoor LLC versus City of Summers Point, City of Summers Point Zoning Board, having a docket number of ATL-L-143-23.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Am I the only one?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Resolution number two forty is adopted. Number two forty-one, please.
Resolution number two forty-one of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the status of potential redevelopment negotiations involving contract purchasers of Ninety Broadway and the city of Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Resolution number.
Nope.
Resolution number two forty-one is adopted. Number two forty.
Wait, wait, wait a second. I didn't know that we were going to adopt it. I have some concerns with some of the issues that were brought up.
It's to go into executive session to discuss it.
I, I have the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have some concerns with going into executive session, even discussing this at this point. I have concerns about the citizens out there that are being, potentially being displaced, and personally, I'd like to see this resolution table. Do I have a second to table it?
Second.
Could I have a, I guess we'll do a roll call vote?
The roll call vote is going to be on table?
If you want to table.
I just want a clarity.
Okay.
Councilmember Garrity?
Yes.
Councilmember DePampelis?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Habercorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McGwigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
I'm going to say no, because I don't know how we're going to get any of this done if we don't have the discussions and the information in front of us, so. Okay, resolution number two forty-one. I guess we're removing that. Number two forty-two, please.
Resolution number two forty-two of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the status of a potential redevelopment agreement for Block 1007, Lots 1, 2, and 3, and Block 1008, Lot 3, in the AH-1 Zone, Bay and Maryland Avenues.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-two is adopted. Number two forty-three.
Resolution number two forty-three of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client communication regarding the status of property assessment litigation in the tax court involving the city entitled Atlantic Synergy Group versus City of Summers Point, having a docket number of 002987-2021 and 005268-2022.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-three is adopted. Number two forty-four.
Resolution number two forty-four of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client communication regarding the status of property assessment litigation in the tax court involving the city entitled Power Sports Holdings LLC versus City of Summers Point and GMH Restaurant Holdings LLC, having a docket number of ATL-C-000078-24.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-four is adopted. Number two forty-five.
Resolution number two forty-five, Chapter 159 Resolution, Local Arts Grant, Summers Point Arts Commission Special Project Support.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-five is adopted. Number two forty-six.
Resolution number two forty-six of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the city's contractual obligations and operational issues with the Beach Concert Series.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-six is adopted. Number two forty-seven.
Resolution number two forty-seven of 2024, full-time hiring of Tiffany Hons.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-seven is adopted. Number two forty-eight.
Resolution number two forty-eight of 2024, resolution authorizing the city of Summers Point to enter into a shared services agreement with the township of Galloway for the purpose of sharing electrical subcode official services.
May I have a motion, please?
Before you do that, I just want to have on the record that I had a conflict with this matter since I also represent Galloway, and I did not have any involvement in the deal, so I'm going to resolution.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two forty-eight is adopted. Number two forty-nine.
Resolution number two forty-nine of 2024, authorizing purchase through Omnia Partners Purchasing Cooperative for multi-function devices, printers, managed print services, and IT solutions for the city's police department.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, any opposed? Number two forty-nine is adopted. Number two fifty, please.
Resolution number two fifty of 2024, authorizing purchase through Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Purchasing Cooperative for concrete repair systems for City Hall.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two fifty is adopted. Number two fifty-one.
Resolution number two fifty-one of 2024, full-time hiring of Alexandra Friend.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Yeah, council president, the public did speak on these two resolutions, two forty-seven and two fifty-one. I want the public to know that they are budgeted, okay, they've been budgeted, the staffing for several years has been four. We unfortunately lost two people, one through resignation and one through retirement, so therefore, the, the burden of the city clerk's department hasn't changed, a matter of fact, over the years it's increased, and I just want the public to know that we're not hiring new employees, we're hiring replacement employees who that have been budgeted for. Thank you. Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Madam City Clerk, you're going to have a full staff now. I just hope these two folks have the smiling faces the rest of your team has there and the way they deal with the public. I have to commend them when I'm, every time I'm in here, no matter what's going on at that window, very professional, so I'm hoping that these two match up to that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two fifty-one is adopted. Number two fifty-three.
Resolution number two fifty-three of 2024, extending contract for 2023 emergency stormwater repairs and miscellaneous maintenance contract.
May I have a motion, please?
Same old. Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, council president, just quickly, this is a contract that allows the city in an emergent situation to do repairs so that the taxpayers of this community are well taken care of when it comes to stormwater and any other type of maintenance repairs associated with public works and with the services of this town. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two fifty-three is adopted. Okay, moving on. Anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none. Anyone have any new business to discuss? Okay, Mr. Frost, would you like to discuss the bills?
We have a bill listing, we've been doing seventy, forty, twenty-six cents. We have two additional records, one amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, seven nine dollars and fifty cents, and the other one is under the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Meeting members of council, mayor, my name's Mary Fonda, I live at 28 Delaware Avenue. I just want to ask if, because this resolution two forty-one was tabled, does that mean that when it's discussed, it will be discussed publicly as opposed to an executive behind closed doors?
Not really.
Want me to answer that?
Yeah, please.
If you can. Anyone can answer.
Does it go back to the committee?
Who knows?
Who knows? Who knows is the answer?
Who knows? It may, it may never come back up. It was tabled, so I don't know what council will do, heads up to, I don't know, council, someone to say they want to bring it back up.
Where does that leave the residents of, of the apartments?
Well, that's a whole, another, another issue.
Yeah.
They have to deal with that, particularly with their own understanding, talking to the way they have their own council and.
Right. Is, so the redevelopment is tabled for now? The, the use of redevelopment?
The discussion of the redevelopment is.
The discussion of the redevelopment is postponed at this point?
Right.
We're talking about it right now.
Right.
Okay. When you do talk about it, are you going to talk about it in public? You don't know. May I request that you talk about it in public? May, may I do that at least?
You can do that.
Thank you very much. So on the record, I would request that you would talk about it in public. Thank you so much.
Motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Same old. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body?
Yeah, council president, I just want to address something that Mr. Fox had said. It just so happened, this was brought to council's attention, in particular my attention. It's not political, just happened to be at a political time. I would have made that decision next year, I would have made that decision six months ago, okay, based on what I, what, what has been brought to my attention.
Now, councilman Dill, I know that to be true, so thank you for confirming.
Okay, my, my, my only concern was the fact that when you questioned Mr. Owen, you said when you'll be running for a, a second term, and I just want to make sure.
Not, not all council people sway with the wind as, as some do.
Well, okay, I just, you know, and I just think that delaying this, and the reason why I delayed this so that it's on the record, is that maybe the residents and the current owner can work their differences out, it's not something that the city can be involved in, but it also gives us an opportunity for the city to work on other redevelopment projects